I'd also like to congratulate all of you incumbents and on your road to your reelection. And, you know, it's, uh, sitting in this seat is, uh, is an honor. And we'll also, we have a, it's a big responsibility. And so it takes a lot of prayers because, uh, there's a lot of people that understand that. There's a lot of responsibility once you take this seat and your, your life is kind of, uh, you know, your boss is the people and you're gonna have to be available for them 24/7. I don't think some people under- understand that till they actually sit in these seats. But, uh, at this time, I'd like to commend all of you for doing a job well done. We've, uh, gone through a lot of, um, tough times during a former administration, but now we're moving forward and people are understanding the importance of this branch here. This branch is really the, the voice of the people and just keep that in mind. And thank you, Speaker, for asking me to pray today. Uh, everyone, bow our heads. Father God, I ask that you bless and sanctify all of these people as we come into our second week of session. As everyone is here, we're here to serve the people. We just ask that you help us with our, all of our decisions that we make in our discussions. Also ask that you look upon those people who've lost loved ones, Father God. Ask that you help them with their grieving as we come into this new season, which is ask for good things for everyone. Like I used to say, and I'm still going to say it, Father God, is that it's going to be a good 2013, and it will be because of you. My thanking for each and every one of these members here in this house. I thank you for each and every person who works here. And just ask for great things for each and every one of them. And we always will praise your name because you are the one in control. And that's why we all sit here is because you put us here. Thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you. Okay, we'll do roll call. I'll start with, uh, Shiba Da.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, Tulagans, Black Lodge.
Pretty Pink, Black Lodge.
Shane Reno.
Kyra Lawrence Reno.
Other Medicine Reno.
Not Afraid, Ospajica.
Lost Grass.
Kukadarm, Big Horn.
Deep Crane, Elk Creek.
Hugs, Elk Creek.
Reilbert, Mayfield.
Oak, Ospajica.
Go ahead, Bapwa.
Fifteen present. Okay, fifteen, fifteen, or thirteen? Thirteen. Okay, thirteen. Okay. Today's, uh, goal is, uh, you know, committee meetings today. I'd like to commend all the chairs for their committee meetings last week. Yeah, again, we're gonna get all the committees', uh, recommendations to either table or to send it back into committee. We want to get that out of the way today. That's the goal and objective. It's starting tomorrow, we'll start working on all the bills that is ready for the full legislature's approval or disapproval. I know that we've waited for a while, but regardless, I know it's Columbus Day, I know the executive branch day, recognize Columbus Day, but this branch doesn't. You know, Steel of Business Day, Working Day, and you, we left off and we've been having, you know, uh, committees, committee meetings today, all last week. And like I said, you guys done a great job on doing your job in committee and coming up with, uh, recommendations for the, for this, uh, October sessions. And, uh, Secretary Oak, do you want to have anything in addition?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the body. Levi, thank you staff for all the hard work you do. Anyway, I want to congratulate all the incumbents on their race that they've gone onto the general. I don't have anything to say at this time, Mr. Speaker, just that, uh, we left off finishing up the, uh, our reports, uh, from the committees and yourself and myself. And at this time, we would be moving on to old business. Thank you.
Okay, I've asked the, I've met with the staff, and this is for everybody's information for them to come in at 12 noon today. And this coming Monday, I'm gonna, we're gonna close the, then we'll close the, uh, the office to give them a day off and to catch up on some of their housework, whatever needs to get done at the house. Monday, this coming Monday, the office will be closed. It, uh, I don't know myself if I can be available, whatever. I don't know about Secretary Oak Crowe. And Jay doesn't have, doesn't get no rest. Next Monday, the office will be closed to give the three-day weekend to the staff. Like I said, they, they really work hard at getting your packets ready, getting the notes, and, uh, so they're always working. We're gonna give them a day off to catch up on their work. Thank you for being here, and that will get some of the business out of the way. So at this time, uh, we will go through the, I guess we can go through the list, or do we have to amend that, Mr. Secretary? As we go along?
No, Mr. Speaker, it is next on the agenda, old business.
Okay, uh, in your package, uh, and then again, Levi Odell is the, uh, editor, journalist, I guess, news reporter from, uh, Big Horn County News. Okay, uh, the first one, this belongs to the Economic Development Committee Chair, Senator Hubs, Secretary is Kenny Shane, and approval of the Articles of incorporation for the Absaloge Development Fund, Inc., Incorporated as a tribally chartered nonprofit corporation eligible for certification as a native community development financial institution. Okay, uh, where does this go? The floor recognizes Senator Hubs.
Yeah. Oh, Speaker, Secretary, body, yes. We're gonna send this one back to committee. Right now, executive, executive, they're, they're working on it. I think they're gonna regroup and work on this piece of legislation.
All right. Okay, anything you want to add, Senator, Secretary Shane?
I'd just like to concur with that, and I did speak with the secretary, the executive branch, and the chairman on Saturday regarding this, and they said that they were going to put, possibly put a different team together because the team that they appointed for this was, uh, the, uh, they were starting to disagree on certain things, so said they might have to get a different team together. So I said, all right, I would talk to the chairman of the committee, which I did before we had session today, and just reiterated a message from them is that they just asked for it to be put back in the committee.
Okay, uh, thank you for the update on that. Uh, so they're gonna gather another team to work on this from the executive branch side, but this is still in committee. So it stays in the economic committee. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next one is on your following page. Joint Action Resolution entitled, "Proposed Memorandum of Agreement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Regarding Protection of Eagles and Enforcement of Federal and Tribal Laws Against Illegal Harvesting and Trafficking of Eagles and Eagle Parts." And this, uh, chairing is the Fish and Game Committee. Senator Coyote runs. The floor recognizes Senator Coyote runs. What's the recommendation on this?
Thank you, Speaker, Secretary, and the body. I conferred with my secretary, Not Afraid, Senator Not Afraid, and we suggested table and I'm making motion to table.
Okay, uh, the recommendation is to table this, and the motion is made by Senator Coyote runs, I believe, that's a motion, right? In the form of a motion? Okay, need a second? Okay, second by Senator, uh, Other Medicine from the Reno District, need a question? Oh, okay, Senator Kukadarm. Okay, all those in favor of tabling this proposed legislation, raise your right hand. Okay, thirteen. Question of privilege, not a question, but a question of privilege. A question was called by Senator Kukadarm. Question of privilege. Okay, is that tabling or better turn it back to committee?
No, it's a table and motion. The motion was a table.
All right. Okay, so the motion has passed, thirteen zero zero, unanimous, with all the senators Okay, this, this is the first tabling motion, right? Mr. Secretary?
This is, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, uh, this will come on the floor at the next quarterly session, and then the second tabling motion with our rules in order, Robert rules in order, it becomes a debt bill at that time. So this will hit the floor again at the January session 2014. Okay, uh, the next agenda, Joint Action Resolution entitled, "Resolution to Update the Pro-Indian Reservation, IRR Long Range Transportation Plan." Okay, this is Transportation Committee. The chair is Senator Tulagans. Secretary is Jeanie Pretty Pain. The floor recognizes Senator Tulagans.
Oh, Mr. Speaker, Secretary, members of the body. Last week, we did meet and finalized the amendments and updates that needed to be changed to the IRR long-range plan, and there were several of them, and I had given a directive to our legal assistant, um, to make the changes and come up with a redline version, and she has done that. And so after meeting with it and getting a recommendation for the passage for this legislation, after being two years in the committee, pretty much it's ready to hit the floor for ratification, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, uh, at this time, this is still in committee, and what I would like to do is, since the executive branch is not here to, uh, represent themselves today, we're gonna continue to keep this in committee until tomorrow. Do we need that in the form of a motion, or we just continue to keep in committee until we can come back to it, right? Okay, it's still in committee until tomorrow, the latest tomorrow. Okay, the next one is the Joint Action Resolution, Resolutions Requesting Fee to Trust Acquisitions of Crowe Tribal Felands. And this is the Natural Resources Committee, Conrad J. Stort, Secretary is Bryce Hux. And I talked to CJ, he had a meeting on this, on the, I believe Tuesday to eight, and CJ said that this stays in committee. So it stays in committee until for further review, until it's ready for the full legislature. Okay, the next one, or do you want to say a few things on the Senator Hubs? Okay. Okay, the next one, a bill for enacted titled, "An Act to Amend the Absaloge Tribe Culture Resource Protection Act." This is Treaty and Culture Committee, Chair is Manuel, Senator covers up, Secretary is Lawrence Deep Crane. The floor recognizes Senator Coversup.
Uh, this one here would be an issue that the request on the executive from chairman and is legal, that you can kill it. That'd be your call then.
Yeah, I wrote here on my notes. But anyways, um, I believe, uh, maybe back to committee or table. So, you know, it's table on the floor is what I wrote down on my notes.
Okay, that'd be fine, table it right now.
Okay, is that in form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Senator Coversup, motions to table this?
I'll second that, Speaker.
Okay, seconded by Senator Reilbert. Question by Deep Crane, Senator Deep Crane. All those in favor of this tabling motion, raise your right hand. Okay. Secretary? Okay, the motion, the tabling motion has passed, thirteen zero zero. It's unanimous of all the... Okay. The next one, a bill for an act entitled, "An Act to Amend Title 10 of the Crow Law and Order Code to Protect Against Non-Crow and Non-Crow Indian, or Non-Indian Felony Convicts Receiving Parental Custody of Crow Children." This is the Health and Human Service Committee chaired by Senator Leroy Not Afraid, Lost Grass, and Secretary is, uh, Secretary of all Secretaries, Jeanie Pretty Pain. Floor recognizes Senator Not Afraid.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Secretary, members of the body. Welcome to our honored guest, former Senator Pius Reilbert. And Big Horn County News is here as well. Um, Mr. Speaker, at this time, with your permission, I'd like to, uh, yield a couple minutes to, um, the Secretary of all Secretaries, Jeanie Pretty Pain, to read off the motion. Uh, that was, uh, passed in committee, and then I can elaborate further.
Okay, floor recognizes Secretary Pretty Pain.
Okay, then you, Duke, you have to probably kind of help me out because I couldn't, I can't read my own handwriting. But you made a motion, and I think you said all, all agree to, for the amendments to this bill between legislative and executive attorneys, and to bring it to the floor to the full legislative for passage.
Okay, let me make a clarification. Yes, uh, my motion at that time was to bring it on the floor, but to get the opinion of the executive branch legal attorney and the legislative branch legal attorney, and then we can go from there, I believe is the motion that I made. Of amendments, amending more to the, uh, this bill, because at this time, I believe, Senator Not Afraid, there hasn't been really any amendments or discussions to this proposed bill. So in order to move it forward and working on it, that was my motion, that we can, and if we make an amendment to it, it doesn't mean that it's ready for the floor. You can still send it back to committee and maybe further, but that was my motion. And at this time, uh, Legal Jay, I've talked, I've discussed this with him, and he hasn't had time to sit down with the legal attorney from the executive branch to get those discussion and those amendments, but we're gonna get their legal opinion from both legal attorneys at the executive branch, and then we can move forward with that, with the full legislature. So we're gonna come back to this as well, too. Uh, yes, it stays in committee. Senator Not Afraid.
I would concur with the secretary and all, the secretary of the Health and Human, and also the, uh, the speaker. I believe the intent of the motion was to keep in committee until both legal departments get a chance to meet and, 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 uh, add amendments to the bill that would accommodate the best interests of the Crow people. Is that your understanding, Madam Secretary?
Okay. Okay, the next, a bill for an act entitled, "Rules and Regulations of the Crow Board of Horse Racing." Uh, this was in the Culture Committee, and the chair is Senator Coversup, right?
Yep.
And who is your secretary?
Lawrence.
Okay, okay, Lawrence, Secretary Deep Crane. Floor recognizes Senator Coversup.
Yes, we had a meeting with the legal and, uh, interest person here and the chairman, and they, uh, we all, with the committee meeting, was the consensus to bring it out to the floor.
Okay, uh, at this time, I believe, uh, do we need the executive branch here, or we can move on the, well, we can come back to this tomorrow and bring it out committee? Yeah. Okay, we'll bring this, keep it in committee, and we'll bring it out tomorrow, and we'll, for the full legislature's vote. Okay. Any questions from Secretary Deep Crane? Okay, uh, the next is a bill for an act entitled, "Act Establishing the Crow Land Acquisition and Disposal Program and Ordinance." This was, uh, Natural Resources Committee, Chair is CJ Stort, and Secretary is Bryce Hux. And did you get with, uh, okay, uh, well, on Tuesday, uh, this committee, they had a committee meeting, and, uh, and this is to keep in committee again by, uh, Chair, to keep it in the Natural Resources Committee. Okay. Next, a bill for an act entitled, "An Act to Amend the Crow Land Leasing Ordinance of 2009." And this is the Surface Land Committee, and Chair is Lucille, Senator Other Medicine, and the secretary is who?
Comrade.
Okay, CJ Stort. Okay, uh, the floor recognizes Senator Other Medicine.
Uh, thank you, Chair, Secretary, body, members, and visiting, um, from the community. Uh, we had a meeting on October eighth, and, uh, the executive came, and they had some concerns, and they want to make some changes to the, uh, to the, um, ordinance. And, uh, at that time, we met and we referred it back to the committee, and then they said that they would like to present it to the January session in 2014. But they were supposed to email some changes so that we can review it some more and meet more on it.
Okay, it is to keep in committee until January 2014 session. Okay, the following page, new business. Change old business, there was another old business, remember, that we amended on the floor, and that was the 10 million. Yep, it was a 10 million. That's old business. Okay, uh, that was to, there was a recommendation for its approval in committee, but we'll get to that. So for today, we'll keep it in committee, and we'll come back to the $10 million question. And so we already had a meeting with that, so, and it's for, the recommendation is for approval of it, and so we'll come back to that tomorrow. So, okay, now we're ready for the next, uh, new business, uh, Joint Action Resolutions. And they met on Tuesday. The Joint Action Resolution of the Crow Tribal Legislature and the Crow Tribal Executive Branch entitled, "Resolution Amending JAR 10-01 Requesting Restoration by the Bureau of Indian Affairs to the Crow Tribe of Certain Agency Reserve Tracks Dedicated for Use by Little Picorn College for Its Health and Wellness Center." And I believe this was Education Call, no, or Infrastructure and Surface Land. The floor recognizes.
Land Service Call and Infrastructure. What a call.
Okay. Okay, uh, I believe that's what I had in my note. Uh, the infrastructure is not here, which is Senator Stort, but the service lands, Senator Other Medicine, floor recognizes you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, we did meet on August eighth, and it was referred back to committee.
August eighth or October?
Correction, October eighth.
Okay, and this to, this is to stay in committee, uh, to further work on it. Okay, uh, go ahead, Secretary Oak Crowe.
Speaker, this has not been read into record yet, so therefore, um, it needs to be adopted onto the, onto the floor, if you want to keep it in committee, unless you want to use Rule, uh, thirteen E.
Okay, I believe, uh, the Joint Action Resolution, I believe that we can read this into record, just adopt it, and just so that it's gonna hit the floor, right? Yeah, it is, huh? Okay. I believe at this time, we're gonna have to, I'm gonna ask, uh, Sec, uh, the Chair of the Surface Land Committee to come and read this into record, and then we can keep Okay, the floor recognizes, uh, Senator Other Medicine, she's gonna read this Joint Action Resolution.
Joint Action Resolution of the Crow Tribal Legislature and the Crow Tribal Executive Branch entitled, "Resolution Amending JAR 10-01 Requesting Restoration by the Bureau of Indian Affairs to the Crow Tribe of Certain Agency Reserve Tracks Dedicated for Use by Little Picorn College for Its Health and Wellness Center."
Okay, need a motion on the floor to the... Motion to the... Okay, Senator Shane, second. Okay, seconded by Senator Hubs, continue.
Whereas the Bureau of Indian Affairs has determined that certain real property located on the Crow Indian Reservation is eligible for transfer under its policies for the revocation of reserve status, in quotes, restorations, and whereas on January 13, 2010, the Crow Tribal Legislation, Legislative Branch enacted JAR 10-01 entitled, "A Resolution Requesting and Approving the Bureau of Indian Affairs to Make a Trust Transfer of Six Crow Agency Parshals in Connection with Its Policy on Revocation of Reserve Status," which was approved by the Chairman of the Executive Branch on January 17, 2010. And whereas the three... And whereas the three tracks specified in Section One, Paragraph C, D, and E of JAR 10-01 were dedicated to future use by Little Bicorne College, quotes, the LBHC tracks. And LBHC has since constructed its health and wellness center thereon and wishes to develop parking and other related facilities on the remaining acre areas of the LBHC tracks. And whereas the meets and bounds, bounds legal descriptions of the LBHC tracks in JAR 10-01 were erroneous. And LBHC has caused the LBHC tracks to be surveyed by a professional engineer and corrected meets and bounds legal descriptions for the LBHC tracks are shown on the certi- certificate of survey attached heretofore as Exhibit A, quote, the LBHC certificate of survey, as partial numbers one through three. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Crow Tribal Legislature and Crow Tribal Executive Branch. Section One, that the legal descriptions of the tracks described in Section One, Items C, D, and E and JAR 10-01 are hereby amended and replaced by the legal descriptions in the LBHC certificate of survey attached heretofore as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section Two, that the Crow Tribal Legislative and Executive Branches hereby reaffirm their requests for the Bureau of Indian Affairs to revoke the reserve status of such tracks and restore them to the administration of the Crow Tribal Government and further request that the EI expedite transfer of these tracks. Section Three, that the Crow Tribal Legislative and Executive Branches hereby reaffirm that such tracks are dedicated to the Little Bicorne College for its use in connection with its health and wellness center. Section Four, that this resolution shall be effective on the date of approval by the Chairman of the Executive Branch.
Okay, uh, I believe there's already a, uh, recommendation by the committee to keep this in committee. Okay, the thirty-minute presentation by the sponsor. Okay, the floor recognizes Senator, uh, Shane Reno, District.
Mister Speaker, at this time, due to the fact that the Executive Branch is not here for the presentation part, I'd like to make a motion to put this back into committee as a member of the committee.
Okay, uh, there's a motion by Senator Shane to keep this in committee. There's second, second by Senator Coyote Runs. Question? Question, Senator, uh...
Point of order.
Okay, what's your point?
We need to follow the protocol and, uh, we can waive this, the thirty-minute presentation, but we need a recommendation from the Chair of the Subcommittee.
Okay. Uh, at this time, can you, uh, withdraw your motion?
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, and withdraw, seconded, withdrawn by Senator Shane, seconded, withdrawal is second by Senator Coyote Runs and the withdrawal by Senator...
I'll withdraw my question.
Withdraw this question. Okay. I believe I, it is up to me to, oh, uh, go, go, uh, go into the recommendation of the Chairman of the Subcommittee. Okay, uh, the recommendation, need to hear the recommendation of the Committee, of the Inf-, uh, Surface Land Committee Chair, Lucille Other Medicine.
I make a recommendation that this, uh, JAR be referred back to the committee.
Okay, that was the motion by the Committee Chair. Need a second now. Second by Senator Shane Reno, District. Question by Senator Coyote Runs. All those in favor keeping this in, uh, uh, Surface Land Committee slash Infrastructure Committee, raise your right hand. Okay. It was unanimous, thirteen zero zero. Floor recognizes Secretary Opro.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, it was thirteen zero zero, thank you.
Yes, so this stays in, uh, committee. Okay. So this stays in committee. Okay, the next one. Joint Action Resolution, the Crow Tribal Legislature and the Crow Tribal Executive Branch entitled Resolution Approving the Crow Tribe Limited waiver of sovereign immunity in the Montana Coal Board Grant for a preliminary architectural report of the Crow Tribal Arbor. And at this time, I believe the, uh, Culture Committee.
Yep.
Okay, Senator Coversup, floor recognizes.
Okay, at this time, I, I would like to have this read through record from our legal here and just, uh, keep this in committee. We had a meeting with the people, but they were, uh, asking, trying to get an opinion from the public about tearing down the Arbor. And they said that they were kind of concerned about that because they like to get a opinion from the public because the last time they tore that roundhouse down, there was a lot of people got mad about that, so they would like to... They wanted the Legislature to contact the people to, uh, send notices to the Executive, but uh, they haven't brought any paperwork, uh, posting or anything like that, so... And we haven't had any meeting since. And just to read into record and put this back into committee. Jay Harris would read it.
Okay, the floor recognizes, uh, Legal Jay Harris to read this and adopt this, to introduce this, uh, JAR.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, Mister Secretary. Good morning this afternoon. Legislature. It is my honor to read this proposed Joint Action Resolution into the record. October two thousand and thirteen, Crow Tribal Legislature, Joint Action Resolution Introduced by Darren Old Coyote, Chairman, Crow Tribal Executive Branch, Joint Action Resolution of the Crow Tribal Legislature and the Crow Tribal Executive Branch entitled Resolution Approving the Crow Tribe's Limited Waiver of Sovereign Immunity in the Montana Coal Board Grant for a Preliminary Architectural Report of the Crow Tribal Arbor.
Okay, need a motion on the floor?
Motion, make, make, make your motion.
Senator Coversup. Second by Senator Hux, continue.
Whereas, the Crow Tribe has submitted an application for a grant from the Montana Coal Board pursuant to Montana Code Annotated, Section ninety dash six dash two oh one in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for a preliminary architectural report of the Crow Tribal Arbor, copy of which is attached heretofore and incorporated by reference, quote unquote, Coal Board Grant. And whereas, the Crow Tribal Arbor has significant deficiencies and a preliminary architectural report is necessary in order to adequately assess existing building conditions and problems and present and analyze reasonable alternatives and feasibility. And whereas, pursuant to Montana Code Annotated, Section ninety dash six dash two oh nine two A, the Coal Board may not approve a grant to an Indian tribe unless the tribe has agreed, one, to waive its immunity from suit on any issue arising from the transaction of a grant obtained under this part, and, two, to the adjudication of any dispute arising out of the grant transaction in the District Court of the First Judicial District of the State of Montana. And whereas, the Chairman of the Executive Branch has authority and responsibility pursuant to the enumerated powers in Article Four, Section Three of the Constitution and Bylaws of the Crow Tribe of Indians to represent the Crow Tribe in negotiations with federal, state, and local governments and other agencies, corporations, associations, or individuals in matters of welfare affecting the Crow Tribe and to negotiate limited waivers of sovereign immunity when such a waiver is necessary for business purposes in accordance with Article Five, Section two F of the Constitution. And whereas, the Legislative Branch has authority and responsibility pursuant to its powers and duties in Article Five, Section two F of the Constitution to grant final approval or disapproval of limited waivers of sovereign immunity by the Executive Branch of Government when waivers are necessary for business purposes. And whereas, receiving funds provided by the Montana... Excuse me, receiving funds provided by the Coal Board Grant is in the best interest of the Crow Tribe and the limited waiver of sovereign immunity required by Montana law is necessary for the business purpose of entering into the Coal Board Grant Agreement. Now, therefore, be it hereby, be it resolved by the Crow Tribal Legislature and the Crow Tribal Executive Branch, Section One, that the Crow Tribe agrees as a condition of receiving the Coal Board Grant, one, to grant a limited waiver of sovereign immunity from suit on any issue arising from the transaction of the above-described Coal Board Grant, and, two, to the adjudication of any dispute arising out of the grant transaction in the District Court of the First Judicial District of the State of Montana. Section Two, that the Chairman of the Crow Tribal Executive Branches hereby authorized to execute an agreement and any associated documents for the Coal Board Grant that contain the conditions set forth in Section One above or substantially similar conditions in compliance with Montana Code Annotated, Section ninety dash six dash two oh nine. Section Three, that the approval granted herein is effective on the date of approval of this resolution. Mister Speaker, Members of the Body, this proposed Joint Action Res- Resolution concludes with the certification page and, of course, the attached application to the Montana Coal Board.
Okay, uh, floor recognizes, uh, Senator Coversup.
Yes, uh, like to, my recommendation is put this back into committee.
Okay, uh, the Culture Committee Chair Coversup. Recommendation is to keep this in committee, that's in the form of a motion, need second? Second by Senator Hux. Question by Senator Not Afraid of Lodgess, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Thirteen. Thirteen zero zero. Okay. The next item on the agenda is bills. And this is the, introduced by Tribe Chairman Darren Old Coyote for and on behalf of the Crow Tribal Executive Branch, a bill for an act entitled The Crow Tribal Water Code. And this was, uh, met on Tuesday, the eighth, by the, uh, uh, Natural Resources. And the Committee Chair is, uh, CJ Stewart, Senator Stewart. And I believe the Secretary is Abecca. Yeah, okay, uh, Secretary, uh, Hux. Uh, I believe, uh, this is to be introduced and sent to committee at that committee meeting. So today, I believe the water code is attached. And we can introduce this. Go through the formalities again and send it to the Natural Resources Committee. This is the last page on your packet. So, do you want to read this into record or you want?
Yeah.
Jay, Attorney Legal Jay, floor recognizes, can read this into record.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker. If I could just know briefly, I would mention that, uh, I'd gotten in contact with Senator Stewart and he was in concurrence to prefer the previous, uh, proposed JAR to Old Business. As a member of the Coal Board, I thought it'd be good just to double-check on the timing. So, we're safe. Okay, Mister Speaker, Mister Secretary, Members of the Body. We have a proposed bill for an act here, which I will read into record, October two thousand and thirteen, Crow Tribal Legislature, CLB, introduced by Tribe Chairman Darren Old Coyote for and on behalf of the Crow Tribal Executive Branch, a bill for an act titled The Crow Tribal Water Code.
Okay, need a motion? Motion by Senator Hux, seconded by Senator Coversup, continue.
Legislative findings. Whereas, Article Five, Section two A of the Crow Tribal Constitution vests the Crow Tribal Legislature herein after legislature with the power and duty to promulgate and adopt laws, resolutions, codes, ordinances, regulations, and guidelines in accordance with the Crow Constitution and federal law for the governance of the Crow Tribe and for licensing of members and non-members for various purposes. And whereas, Article Four, Section three G of the Crow Tribal Constitution vests the Crow Tribal Executive Branch, herein after Executive Branch, with the power and responsibility subject to any limitations imposed upon such powers by the statutes and laws of the United States to enforce all laws, ordinances, resolutions, regulations, or guidelines providing for the licensing of members and non-members for various purposes. And whereas, Article Four, Section three J of the Crow Tribal Constitution vests the Executive Branch with the power and responsibility subject to any limitations imposed upon such powers by the statutes and laws of the United States to protect and preserve the property and natural resources of the Crow Tribe, including water, in accordance with ordinances adopted by the Legislature. And whereas, Article Four, Section four A of the Crow Tribal Constitution provides that the general duties of the Executive Branch officials shall include the duty to implement all laws, resolutions, codes, and policies duly adopted by the Legislature. And whereas, the Montana Legislature, in special session, ratified the Water Rights Compact entered into by the State of Montana, Crow Tribe, and United States of America herein after Water Compact on June twenty-second, nineteen ninety-nine, and the United States in Congress ratified the entire settlement, entire water settlement on December eighth, two thousand and ten, and the overall Claims Resolution Act and the Crow Tribal General Council via referendum ratified the Crow Water Rights Settlement, including the Water Compact on March nineteenth, two thousand and eleven. And whereas, Article seven A one provides that the effective date of the Water Compact shall be the date when the State of Montana, Crow Tribe, and United States Congress have each ratified the Water Compact, whichever date is latest. And whereas, Article four A to B of the Water Compact provides that administration and enforcement of the Crow Tribal Water Right shall be through the Crow Tribal Water Code, herein after Water Code, which shall be developed and adopted by the Crow Tribe pursuant to any requirements set forth in the Crow Tribal Constitution and which shall be adopted by the Crow Tribe within two years of the effective date of the Water Compact. And whereas, Section four oh seven F one of the Crow Tribe Water Rights Settlement Act, herein after Settlement Act, provides that notwithstanding the time period set forth in Article four A to B of the Water Compact, not later than three years after the date on which the Crow Tribe ratifies the Water Compact, the Crow Tribe shall enact the Water Code, which must provide for the management... The Crow Tribe shall enact the Water Code, which must provide for the management, Regulation, and governance of all uses of Crow Tribal Water Rights and the establishment By the Crow Tribe of conditions, Permit requirements, and other limitations relating to the storage, recovery, And use of the Crow Tribal Water Rights in accordance with the Water Compact. And whereas, Section four oh seven F two of the Settlement Act provides that the Water Code Must include language which establishes as Crow Tribal Law That Crow Tribal allocations of water to allottees Shall be satisfied with water from Crow, from the Crow Tribal Water Rights. That charges for delivery of water for irrigation purposes for allottees shall be assessed on a just and equitable basis. That there is a process by which an allottee may request that the Crow Tribe provide water for irrigation use in accordance with the Settlement Act. That there is a due process system for the consideration And determination by the Crow Tribe Of any request by an allottee or any successor in interest to an allottee For an application of such water for irrigation purposes on allotted land. Including a process for appeal and adjudication Of any denied or disputed distribution of water. And a process for resolution of any contested administrative decision. That there is a requirement that any allottee with a claim relating to the enforcement of rights of the allottee under the Water Code Relating to the amount of water allocated to land of the allottee Must first exhaust remedies available to the allottee under Crow Tribal Law Including the Water Code Before initiating an action against the United States or petitioning the Secretary of Interior Pursuant to Section four oh seven D of the Settlement Act. And whereas, Section four oh seven F three B of the Settlement Act Provides that the Water Code shall not be valid Unless the provisions required by Section four oh seven F two of the Settlement Act Are approved by the Secretary of the Interior. And whereas, Section Four oh seven F three C Of the Settlement Act provides That the Secretary of the Interior shall approve or disapprove the Water Code Within a reasonable period of time after the date on which the Crow Tribe submits it to the Secretary. Now, therefore be it hereby enacted as Crow Tribal Law by the Crow Tribal Legislature in regular session. Section One, The attached and incorporated as if stated herein, Crow Tribal Water Code Shall be made Title twenty-five of the Crow Law and Order Code. Section Two, Effective Date. The Crow Tribal Water Code shall become Effective as a matter of Crow Tribal Law immediately upon being duly Adopted by the Crow Tribal Legislature and approved by the Chairman of the Executive Branch Or in accordance with the veto override process established by the Crow Tribal Constitution And CLB oh six dash oh eight. Provided that all such provisions Of the Crow Tribal Water Code which require review and approval by the Secretary of the Interior Shall become effective upon such approval in accordance with federal law. Section Three, Submittal of Water Code to Interior Department. Upon the effective date of this act, the Secretary of the Executive Branch shall immediately submit A certified and complete copy of the Crow Tribal Water Code to the Secretary of the Interior in Washington, DC. Mister Speaker, this proposed bill concludes with the certification statement on the following page.
Okay, thank you. I guess The Secretary of the Natural Resources is Senator Hugs. I don't know if you've got in contact with CJ, but CJ, I sat down with him, this is to keep this in Committee. In the Natural Resources Committee, so I need a motion on the floor. Okay. Second, Senator Hugs, second by Senator Not Afraid of Lodgegrass, question by Senator Coversup, all those in favor, raise your right hand. We don't have a quorum to vote on this at this time because, oh, there she is. The Secretary, okay. It's unanimous. Right, Mister Secretary?
Not correct.
Yes, sir. Okay. So the motion has passed thirteen zero zero For keeping in committee, Natural Resources. Okay, I believe that Uh, we're gonna reserve, there's a few LRs That There's a personnel policy. And personnel policy is the Committee Chair is Senator Pretty Paint. And she said that Jay needs to make new draft for the full legislature. So Jay still has to work on the personnel policy, it's ready Of the new The new personnel policy that they've been working on. And then the other one, Uh, I believe an LR Is the Health and Human Service. Uh, we had a confirmation, The Health Board Confirmation Hearing. And all the six Health Board Members It passed in committee, Seven zero zero for full legis- For full legislative approval. And they need to be sworn in At the time. And then also, For everybody's info, Uh, we need to sworn in Uh, Appellate Judge Heather Corson sometime this week, we're gonna schedule that. And that's, I believe, That's about it for Uh, the LRs, LR portion. So Jay has to do the personnel policy, New draft, and it will hit the floor. And then the other one Is the confirmation Approval of the Health Board. And they'll, they need to be sworn in, and the other one is the Appellate Judge, sorting in of the Appellate Judge. So at this time, Mister Secretary, Do you have anything? Any comments, any notices, or anything? But at this time. Thank you. Okay. And so, at this time, We're gonna need a motion to recess until ten AM tomorrow.
Motion.
Okay, motion by Senator Leroy Not Afraid, seconded by Senator Coversup, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, okay. Good job. You.